...is going to be about medical applications, machine learning. And it's my pleasure to welcome Julio César Rodríguez, who has been working for a long time on the interface between systems biology and machine learning. He was previously at the EBI in Cambridge and has recently moved to the Aachen University in Germany. And he's going to be talking about understanding and predicting drug efficacy in cancer.
Great. Yeah, thanks so much, Magnus, for introduction, and Joan Klow for the invitation to present today. And thank you all for coming despite all the exciting alternatives in the other sessions. What I'd like to... Let me see, which is the pointer that works? So yeah, we're moving now to applications, so the talk is going to be much more lightweight than what you heard before, and rather presenting areas where I think there is a lot of room for people like you guys to contribute. And in our group, we are interested broadly speaking in the question of personalized medicine, like so many others in this room and elsewhere, which I think quite nicely summarized here by Francesco Jori, a postdoc in the group. We're trying to solve this puzzle, which is to find which drug we should give to a patient based on data, and in particular molecular data, that we can gather with increasingly facility recently. And our take on these questions and what I'd like to convey today is that to move forward into this direction, I think it's quite important to use as much as we can information around the underlying mechanisms within the cell that are the regulated in disease, but also that are often the target of therapeutics. So in our group, we work primarily on cancer, and in particular on understanding the use of target therapies. And it's probably you know, we have learned a lot about cancer over the last decades, and this has led to development of therapies that are fairly tailored to these mechanisms. For example, we know that the MAP kinase pathway is on here that promotes proliferation. It's mutated in a large number of skin cancer patients. It's again a functional mutation, then the tumor grows. And 15 years ago or so, it was postulated that if a drug is the bell of the target, specifically this mutated form of the kinase, this will stop the disease. So when this drug was taken into the clinics, the results were spectacular. This is a patient with a very advanced stage of skin cancer, and 17 weeks taking this drug, and as you can see, the drug, the tumor seems to vanish. However, the patient returned to the clinic seven weeks later, the tumor is back, the drug doesn't work, and suddenly the patient dies soon after this picture was taken. So this is a hard picture, but I think it's important to convey the promises, but also the limitations of these target therapies. So the concept works, but the effect is limited to a group of patients. And after success, almost inevitably, there is a resistance mechanism, and the tumor comes back. Therefore, two key questions in this context is how we can find which patients are going to respond to patients? And second, can we try to develop therapies to overcome this resistance by combinations of drugs? And this is what I'll be talking about today. So as a model system to study this, we use a very large collection of cancer cell lines. This was also introduced this morning, which is the genomic of drugs in the dividing cancer that is developed by Matthew Gardner, Ultam Ademod, the Sanger Institute, and Cyril Véness in MGH in Boston. There are other similar ones, like at the Broad Institute, the CCL, for example. And the idea of this screening is to have many cell lines from different tissues of origin that you can see here, like breast or skin and so forth, and to characterize them molecularly with as much detail as possible. So in the context of this data, what we have for all these cell lines is mutation information, copy number alterations, methylation data, as well as gene expression. And a very common and a very valid question when looking at these data is how good a model is this of a primary tumor, because after all, these are cell lines growing on a dish. And certainly, these cell lines cannot capture many of the important aspects of tumors, such as the role of microenvironment or many others. But what we did is to see how well they can recapitulate what you see at the molecular level in terms of aberrations in patients. And I'm not going to go into the details, but we found that at least in terms of these aberrations, they are reasonably good model of what happens in primary tumors. So we can use them to study that part of cancer. And of course, the value of using cell lines is that there are many things we can do with them, and in particular, we can treat them with drugs. And the context of this panel, all of these cell lines have been treated with over 250 drugs, and the number keeps growing. And these drugs, what they do is to target, some are cytotoxic, just general poisons, but most of them are targeted to specific pathways, such as the one I saw you before. And then what we do is we have for each of these cell lines, a drug response curve typically summarized by the IC50, which is the amount of drug that you need to kill half of the cells. And the question is why giving a drug, as given cell line is sensitive, the drug works, but for other cell line, it doesn't work, and you need a lot of drug to kill the cells? And to answer this question, then, what we try is to combine, on one hand, the molecular data of the cell lines with the drug response, so as to find associations between both. As an example, this is the same case that I showed you before with the patient. We see that cell lines with a mutation in BRAF have a lower IC50, that means they are more sensitive to the drug that hit on BRAF. And using very simple statistical associations, like analysis of variants, we could, for example, find that there is a large number of these associations. Some of them are specific for a given tumor type, many of them are campaign cancer across different tumor types. And what is important is that these associations relate to mutations that we know from the patient studies from the TCGA, that they are present in a good number of patients. Therefore, that many of these associations point to markers that are present in many patients and could be explored further for certification. And I'd like just to point that all this data, besides on a website, is also available now through a Python package developed by Tom Akkola, that allows you to do some of the basic analyses, like analysis of variants or basic elastic net, but also it's a Python tool where you can maybe plug in some more advanced machine learning methods that you want to try on this data. Okay, so I talked about these associations now, and I saw you this example, a mutation on BRAF has an effect of whether a BRAF drug works or not. Is it all that simple? So to look at that, what we did is to visualize all these associations according to which process they are affecting. So on this axis, we look at the genetic alterations, and on this one, on the drug target, so that, for example, this association here means that a mutation in the MAP kinase pathway affects a drug that hits the MAP kinase pathway. So first, you see that actually the diagonal is not that full, is not often, or simply the drug and the mutation on the same protein. You do see many things on the same pathways, right? That's the sample I saw. But you also see a large number of things which are involving different pathways. So let's say a mutation in the MAP kinase pathway affects a drug that affects the PF3K pathway. So these are complex relationships, and this motivates us to look at this data through the lens of the underlying pathways and networks, which these mutations are and where these drugs exert the effect. And we and many others, including some of you, and we have seen also different talks of different network and pathway-based methods are trying to do this. I just want to mention briefly some of our own tools that we developed. So one thing that we did is to think of ways how we can take the exome sequencing data, and rather than to look at the individual gene, trying to develop scores of pathways that then you can use for further analysis. We developed a few methods for gene expression, and what we tried to do is not to use gene expression as a proxy of the components of the pathways, because doing that, which is what many methods do, has two strong assumptions. First is that from the gene expression, you can infer the protein levels, and we know that's only to some degree true. And second, and even more importantly than from the protein level, we can infer the level of activity of proteins. So instead, what we try always to think of gene expression is more like something downstream of the pathways that tells you something about what's happening upstream in those pathways. So one thing that you can do is to infer the activity of transcription factors, if you know the regulons that are downstream of it, and use this then again as a biomarker that you can relate to drug response. If you have identified transcription factors, there are methods of causal reasoning that you can use them to link to what's happening upstream, like as mutation, for example. And also, what you can do is to try to find signatures of activity of pathways, but again, looking at the footprint that they have on the gene expression rather than at the components on the pathways. And I'm going to tell you a bit more about these ones, but if you're more interested in this, this is also available in bioarchive. So the idea here is to identify footprints of pathway activities. And for doing so, what Michael Schuber, a student in the lab, did is to generate a large collection of, or find a large collection of studies in Area Express, where people have perturbed pathways with different ligands, like people put EGF or activate the MAP kinase pathway, and you see which genes changes. And we first focused on a subset of pathways for which we could find enough experiments to derive robust signatures. And then Mike developed a method simply to extract from these data sets the signatures of activation of given pathways. And once you have this matrix of pathways and genes, you can apply this to any dataset to get a score of activity of pathways. So as a first thing, we look at TCGA data, and we see how many associations we find with these methods comparing them with other methods that what they do is to look at genes that are part of the pathway. And what you can see here comparing this method is progeny hours with other type of strategies, that we find many more associations or rather stronger associations with survival that you would find with the other methods. It has to be said, though, that our method is limited to pathways for which we have enough data. In this study, we had 12, now we have extended to three more. But of course, you don't have the same coverage that you have with the other methods that you can have for any pathway. But if you have enough information, it seems from this that it's more powerful to look downstream of the pathway, not of the genes of the pathway. And the same way that you can look at survival in patients, we did the same with the drug screening data. And what we found, and again, this is comparing to state-of-the-art methods, this is our method here in blue, and these are all the other methods, and what you see here is how many associations we find, and here the statistical significance, you see that we find many more. The strongest associations would come still from mutations, but these are the cases such as the one before, that the drug was designed to specifically target the mutated form of a kinase. So of course, in those cases, that is the strongest biomarker, but otherwise, these footprints give you strongest associations that any other pathway method. And just to give you an example of how can this be used, this is the effect of rapamycin, an mTOR inhibitor, and this is how strong it works across different tissues. This is the IC50, so lower means a stronger effect. If you look in particular at esophagus cancer, which is right here, you see that it doesn't work particularly well, but if now you take the cells from esophagus cancer and you split it into groups, the ones where EGFR is not functional according to our signatures versus those where it's functional, you see really that there is a strong difference, and actually these subset are pretty sensitive to this drug. And the value of this, of course, is that you can then think, okay, if this is true, I could now come with a second drug and try to block EGFR, to basically take all my cells here and make them sensitive. And this is an example that among many others, we're trying to validate at the moment how well they work. But just a bit to summarize this previous slide, so the idea is that if you have these large datasets, you can try to extract from the mechanistic features, and by doing so, you win two things. First, you reduce the dimensionality, right? So instead of looking at 20,000 genes, you would look at handful of pathways or a few hundreds of transcription factors. But second, because these signatures are really based on a concrete biochemical processes that lend themselves well for interpretation or even for further up experiments as hypothesis generators, as in example before. Okay? So and I'd like to move on of what we want to do with this data, right? So this is how we extract features, but of course, the aim of these studies is to be able to predict drug response, to then apply machine learning, take the genomic features of the cell lines and probably combine them with, for example, chemical features of the drugs, use your favorite machine learning, and being able to predict the drug efficacy. And if this works, this would be really powerful, because, for example, we could try to predict what happens if there are new cell lines, and from this, we could then try to move on to predict what happens if we have patients, which is the most promising drugs to give to the patients. Or alternatively, we could try to see, we could in silico test different drugs and try to see which ones could be applied perhaps to cancer or specific cancer types where they were not used before. So this will be great, but how well does it work? So in our first basic attempts, using relatively out-of-the-box machine learning methods, we found actually doesn't work very well. So this is using different of this omics data that I described before, and this is how well we performed, the visual correlation, right? Should go all the way up there. It's not so good, except for a few cases. And actually, if you use simply the tissue of origin as predictor, if you don't use the molecular data, you do also not much worse than many of these. So we had very bad models. And then, well, you could think, as I told you before, we are not a machine learning group, so maybe you don't know what you're doing. You should ask the experts, right, to solve this problem. So that's what we did. And what we did is to pose this as a crowdsourcing challenge, where people could try to solve this problem of predicting drug sensitivity. And I think most of you are familiar with these ideas. There are many also talks and sessions in this conference around Camda, and there's CASP and many others, but so very briefly, the idea of this crowdsourcing is that rather than try to solve the problem yourself, you post it to the scientific community as a whole, and you keep the answer. So you give a training test, a training set, you keep the test set, you let people play, and then you see how well they do. And this allows you to evaluate methods in an unbiased manner, and also enhance reproducibility. And also, it allows you to gather what is called the wisdom of the crowds, which is that bringing together different teams, different methods, you can do better than with a single method, which is in principle the idea under ensembles, which I guess most of you are familiar with these ideas, but perhaps what you don't know is that this is a very old idea, and goes all the way back to Galton, who over 100 years ago, he was actually thinking about the value of democracy, which maybe in the light of recent results, we should think again. And then what he did is he went to Plymouth in England, where the farmers had a game, right? There was an ox, and they would all try to guess what is the weight of the ox. And when he took the median of what all of them predicted, this was pretty close, only one pound off from the actual weight, right? So no one was close, but the median was pretty close. So this wisdom of the crowds seems to work, and this has led or is the basis underlying many of these crowdsourcing exercises. As I mentioned before, there are many, like CASP for protein structure is one of the first, there is Camda, that was a great session here as well, and many others. And in our case, what we are is part of Dream, which is one of these strategies to use crowdsourcing to advance different biomedical problems. We started from network inference, but over the years, this has expanded in different areas. We heard before about signaling network inference in the previous talk, but this was also applied to predict whether patients develop faster or slower at disease, or also the effect of drugs, that will come back in a second. And actually, at the moment, we're running a challenge on predicting proteomics data from other omics data, so the question of proteogenomics, using cancer datasets from the NCI. And the idea is if you can predict proteomic or phosphoproteomic data from other datasets, the challenge was launched a few weeks ago, but we're just starting now, so if you have nothing to do this summer, or your students have nothing to do this summer, come out and play, it's always fun, and we always learn a lot together. It's not so much about winning, it's about learning, but of course, it's fun to also see how well you can do. So we tried this strategy in the context of drug sensitivity, right? The same problem I said before, actually, the data wasn't from the Sanger, was from Joe Gray's lab in Oregon, who donated data on breast cancer cell lines, but the same story, you have different omics data, you have drug response, you give to people how well they, or they give the data for some cell lines, and you keep some of them to evaluate how well they do. And actually, when we did this challenge, we learned a lot of things. So we learned, for example, that whether a drug is easier to predict or not is variable, and does not depend on what the drug does molecularly, that gene expression seems to be the most informative data type, or that combining different datasets with pathways seems to be a useful strategy, but then the actual machine learning algorithm didn't seem to have a strong effect, and many other lessons that I want to get into in the interest of time. But back to the question of how well can we predict? If you look at the performance of the 44 teams that took part, and here, there are really some things that are really experts on this, nobody did very well. So here, you see the level of random, all but one did better than random, but again, this should go all the way up there, and that was not the case. So it was not only us, it seems to be a difficult problem to predict drug response. And actually, if you think about it, it's maybe at first glance surprising, because you have these wonderful datasets, you had a lot of people trying. So why is it so hard to predict drug response? What do you guys think? Anyone has an idea? There is no wrong answer? No? I'll give you some. For sure, we still need to improve the algorithms. We need more samples. We had 1,000, seems high, but not given the all the features and the complexity of the problem. We need better readouts. We only measure the viability, right? And drug efficacy is a complex process that probably affects many other things. We had multiple layers, but probably we need more, and in particular, you would think proteomics is very informative, because drugs binds to proteins and so on. But now, we got in for a subset of the cell lines, proteomic data, and if you try to use that, you win a bit, but it's not really solving the problem. So all these are true, and for sure, there are many others that we can discuss later. But there is another point that I'd like to talk about in some more detail, that I think is maybe not so taken into account, is that we need data that is more functional. So all this basal data, all the data I saw is basal, right? You profile the cell lines before they have been treated with drugs. But the effect of a drug is intrinsically dynamic process. So the basic idea is that you have a mutation somewhere, this hyperactivates a pathway, and when you take the cell, the cancer cell, you hit it with a drug, you expect to block that. But this is dynamics, and if, for example, there is a feedback effect, this can compensate for the effect of the drug. Or if there is some sort of compensatory pathway that reacts to this drug as well. And these things are very hard to get simply from the basal data, and what we and others think is that we need to understand better how these pathways works and how the response to therapeutics in a dynamic manner, that is both mechanistic, so we can understand and also predictive, so we can try to see what's happening. And this question of building networks, or predictive dynamic models from data, is quite a challenging one, and the way I like to think about it is by analogy with Plato's allegory of the cave. And if you haven't heard about this, this is Plato, the Greek philosopher, right, that he wrote about prisoners kept in a cave, they never saw the real world, or all they see is projections in a wall of objects, and from this, they try to see that, you know, this is a donkey, this is a bull, and so forth. In a way, this is what we are facing when we are trying to reconstruct these networks. We are not able to open up the cell and see how it works. We get some indirect measurements from which we try to reconstruct the pathways. And to shed light on this problem, we also did one of these challenges that, again, was presented in the previous talk, where we had a few cancer cell lines. These various cancer cell lines were treated with different stimuli, different ligands, together with different inhibitors, and then have a quite rich dynamic dataset, that then we used to see how well people can predict networks and as well as predict the outcome of the time courses of new experiments. And I'm not going to go much into the lessons learned from this challenge, except for one, which is that we found that it always helps to use prior knowledge. So here, you see the performance of different teams, and there is statistically significant difference for those that use prior knowledge, and in particular, the very best ones that use prior knowledge besides the data to build the models. And so this idea of combining prior knowledge with data, I think, is quite important in this case of signaling, where we have a lot of knowledge from decades of research. And this is also what we try to do in our own group. So in our group, we use logic formalisms, and what we try to do is to combine this network information that you can get from literature with high-throughput perturbation experiments, that you can generic different technologies, and combine them into, through a tool that we call CellNUT, that allows you to build mechanistic predictive dynamic models. And as I mentioned before, we use a very simple logic formalism, where things are like in an electric circuit, connected with gates, if something is on, then something is on, if something is on, but something is not on, then something is not off, and so forth. It is very simple, is of course not how biology works, but allows you to look at large networks and large amount of data in an efficient manner. So let me tell you a little bit of how we do these models and how we take the different inputs that we need. The first one is where you get your networks from. And there is a lot of great resources out there, databases, and also portals, such as Pathway Commons, which have a wonderful collection of resources, and it's something we also use in our own analysis. But for these mechanistic models, we needed something a bit more focused on what is useful for logic models, which is sign and directed interactions. So what we did is to put together a number of resources that are useful for this, combined with other information that is important for signaling, such as phosphorylation or spatial localization, and all is built in with a Python module that allows you to go really deep behind into all the resources to extract all the information, all the literature, and so forth. And we also did some benchmarks to try to see which is the most useful resource of combinations of resources for different applications. And the idea is a bit like, so my mom is a son of entomologist, so I used to go a lot to try glasses, so it's a bit like that. So the idea is that with this tool, you can try the different resources and try to find what is the best resource or combinations of resources for your model or your analysis at hand. And we use it in our case in this way, to build these logic models. So this is where the networks come from, and where does the data come from? So we started using antibody-based strategies, like protein arrays, which was using the challenge, or LumineX, that I'll see an example of in a moment. More recently, we tried to expand this to mass spec data. Mass spec is very powerful, you measure thousands of proteins, but it's very challenging in a number of ways, but we managed to apply similar strategies to this type of data. And also recently, we tried to apply this to single-cell signaling data, in particular mindsetometry with Verbo de Miller, and to live cell imaging with Carsten Schultz. But with this, I just want to show that these logic models are very flexible, you can apply them to actually very different data types with some adaptations. In terms of what happens in the tool, right? And the tool at the end of the day is a learning process, so there is a number of interesting algorithmic questions, I will not go into detail, but you can try to apply things like from machine learning, like different ensemble strategies, or MCMC, or many others. You can also try to apply formal methods from computer science, such as answer set programming or others. And there is, I think, a lot maybe for someone interested in types of approaches with a more machine learning background to try to expand these methods. A point that I think is often overlooked when doing not just logic models, but in general network-based approaches, is to think, what is the right null model when you have these networks, right? So all our models use these networks as inputs, and it's not clear how much, it's just some sort of artifact coming from where your network come from. So one thing that Francesco Jori and the group developed recently is a package in R to try to randomize networks in a meaningful manner, which sounds, it's trivial, but if you think about it, it's a bit more subtle. So but I think it's quite important always to make sure that what you get out of the model is what you think you are getting out of the model. Okay, but this is just some glimpses into maybe interesting questions or aspects of these models, but I'm coming now back to the question that I'm trying to go over today, right? And I'm trying to show you if indeed we can use these mechanistic logic models, dynamic models, to help to understand this drug resistance and drug efficacy that, as we saw, is still we have a long way to go. So then, our idea was using these logic models that I just described, to take a general network from this resource omnipath, and in different, in this case, colon cancer cell lines, to build for each one of them a cell-specific model that is based on perturbation experiments, measured with a technology called LumineX for 14 different cell lines. And then trying to build these models, and then try to relate this back to the drug screening, where we have the drug response for many drugs in many cell lines, and try to see if there is some sort of correlation between what we find in the dynamic model and what we have seen the drug response. So this is study which was done with, together with Niels Bluth and in Berlin, and Matthew Gardner and the Sanger, we tried to do this. So Niels' group developed this, the data for the phosphoproteomic, ran this logic model strategy, so that we got 14 different networks that are tailored to each cell type based on this phosphorylation data. And then we tried to see if these changes in the network correlate with the drug response. And we found a number of cases that are shown here, for which, but there is a strong association between a component of dynamic model and a drug, and importantly, for which there is no basal marker. So there is no mutation or no other basal thing that explains the efficacy of this drug. So these are really related to the dynamic features of these cells. And in particular, one that we found interesting was an association between the activity of GSK3, which is downstream of the PI3K activity pathway, and inhibitors of MEK in the mapkinous pathway. So what we saw is that there is a correlation between the activity of GSK3 and these MEK inhibitors. So as GSK3 becomes more active, more functional, the IC50 is higher, the cells are more resistant to these inhibitors. And then the idea was, if this is not just some correlation, but indeed there is some functionality, some causality behind, we should be able to take the cells up here and by blocking GSK3, make them become sensitive. And that's what we did. So for all of these 14 cell lines, also you just the two extreme examples. So first, if you take the cell line down here, that is anyway sensitive to MEK, by adding GSK3, nothing happens because GSK3 is not functional. But on the other stream, if you take the one up here and you add GSK3 to MEK, you see how the sensitivity increases. So there was not just an association, there was some mechanistic relationship between both. Good. So this is an example of how logic models can be useful to understand and drug response and to provide new biomarkers. And with that, I'd like to finish my talk and just summarize and give you just some hints of future directions before I wrap up. So I talked about this drug screening, these pharmacognomic data sets, that certainly are very useful resources to generate hypotheses. But however, I think we're still far from just predicting drug response from them and in particular, certainly not just by simply using black box models. I think we can move farther quite a lot if we combine these data sets with prior knowledge in different ways, with different flavors, and in particular, perturbation-based information is seems to be quite powerful. Now, as I said, let me talk a bit of what I think you should be looking forward, and in particular, how we can bring all of this into the clinic. Because after all, this is our cell lines in the lab. How do we know if anything we find here really matters for treating patients? And that's a tough challenge, because what we need to do is we need to go from in vitro to in vivo, and then in vivo to patients. And as we move around this access, of course, the medical relevance increase, but amount of data decreases. So I think we need to find ways where we can leverage what we know here for patients. And one way to go in that direction is, of course, to try to develop methods that allow us to extrapolate from the lab to in vivo. And there are different ways of doing this, and we and others are trying, for example, to combine, try to merge somehow, the cell line information with patient information so that you can try to identify which drugs is going to work for each patient. And here, again, you can think of many different bioinformatics, machine learning, and different type of strategies. But we also think that, as I showed before, that there is value in using these more mechanistic approaches. And so one thing that we are doing in the context of a European project with Logan Skalson's group at Institut Koolui, is to use logic models to try to build patient-specific models to then try to understand better drug response. There are other strategies, there was a talk from Fabian Foli on Saturday of doing something similar with OD models, and I think there is different strategies trying to go in this direction as well. And it's a long way to go. And actually, I don't think we're going to be able just like that, because this is like trying to make, you know, a big bridge over a river, like if you go now to the center of Prague and try to make a bridge, it's not going to hold unless you support it somehow. And I think in this case, the support for these bridges are bringing in data of other models that are closer to real tumors, but they all have their limitations, such as mouse models, organoids, and many others. And also trying to see how much we can get directly from an in vivo setting. And for this, one thing that we have done recently, together with Christoph Mertens and EMBL in Heidelberg, is to use macrofluidic-based system to perform drug screening ex vivo, so directly from patients' biopsies, no cultivation. So you take the biopsy and you directly do drug screen because you need very small amount of cells. And with surgery in Aachen, with Thorsten Krömer and Ulf Neumann, we did a pilot of this on pancreatic cancer. And I think this technique, which also has its limitations, is maybe one more that can help us to, how to go from in vitro to in vivo. With that, I'd like to finish and thank you for your attention. And good in time, right? Yeah. Let me, so let me thank properly everyone. So the drug screening work was spearheaded by Francesco Joria, together with Michael Menden. And this was done with Matthew Gardner, Gulsam Ademo, the Sanger, and the group of loadbike vessels at the NKI. The signature was the work of Michael Schubert. And the OmniPath resource was done by Dennis Toulay with Damash. The logic model was done by Kami, Thomas, Aidan, and in part by Federica, and more recently also Luis. And the Dream is a very big community, a lot of people contributing, and it's really great, but in particular, Gustavo is the leader of these efforts. And I didn't get to talk about some work we did with Ole Stigel on the role of germline in drug response, and with Pedro Beltrau on phosphoproteomics. And the last study was done with Niels. And things I only mentioned is applications to single cell with Verbo de Miller and mass spec with Rudy Ebersold, and in algorithmic with Julio Banga in Spain and Carito Anna in France. And with that, yeah, thank you for your attention and happy to take any questions.
Thank you for the great talk. So by the end of your talk, you mentioned that one of the problems why building a predictive model for drug response that are, that uses the feature pre-treatment, let's say the molecular feature of the patient or cell lines, do not work very well is because that they do not capture the dynamics, so let's say, the compensatory pathways or feedback mechanism. But there is also, so there's another data set, resources that try to capture this, I'm sure you're aware, the LINCS project?
Absolutely.
That also measured the response, expression response after treatment. Are you aware of any efforts to try to merge these two resources?
Yeah. So
And try to understand better.
The LINCS is very powerful for, as you said, because it's a way to have perturbation data. We use it a bit in, associated with the Sanger data set. There was also other talk by the group of Fatima Alzahur earlier today, or from Anna's group, right? So in the morning, so there are different strategies to use this data. And I think it's very informative as well. I mean, it has its own limitations because it's L1,000 platform, you only measure 1,000 transcripts, but for sure, it's a very useful tool. And I didn't have time to discuss it, but we also tried to use it, yeah.
Thank you for the interesting talk and educational in so many surprising levels. So I was wondering about the cell-specific networks that you train. And they are, they are different, of course, although the basic is the same, but they are different in the, in the activity. I was wondering if the differences can be explained, are they explained by genetic alterations? Are they explained by something else? Have you looked into it?
Yes, a brilliant question, Dana. To, we didn't find any mutations or things that could explain this. We thought it would be more informative because, yeah, I mean, in theory, there is mutations or other alterations that drive these differences. But a bit of the problem is that, I mean, we look, we focus on the genes in the pathways or near the pathways, and we didn't find anything. But of course, if you look whole genome, it does not have enough statistical power with this number of cell lines. But for sure, it is there, but I think it's quite convoluted how the fact manifests itself at the signaling level and we couldn't find it.
Hi, thank you for the talk. I have a question about the generation of random networks that preserve. So is your method able, the one that you were introducing before, able to preserve also the modularity of the networks? So when you generate these random networks, you control the edge distribution and the other topologies of the network? But do you also have control over the modularity?
Actually, it's a good question, and I don't think it's focused for keeping the modularity. I mean, it's focused more on keeping the functional distributions of the individual nodes, but not for the modularity. But I think there are different ways how you can randomize networks. And each of them would preserve something else. And I think it's, it's the critical thing is, think what is the most important feature that you want to make sure is preserved, given the question you're trying to answer, and maybe even trying different strategies. Yeah.
Yeah, because the one I was interested in was the modules.
We can talk more later, maybe.
Thanks, thanks.
One more. Later? Okay.